Good evening. And welcome to the July 3 meeting of the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission. I am Stan Siegel and I'll be presiding this evening at the meeting. This meeting has been called pursuant to the Brookhaven zoning ordinances and specified on tonight's agenda. You can get copies of the agenda and related documents should be at the back of the room. Also, if you plan on speaking this evening, we'd ask that you'll need to fill out a comment card with your name, address, and comments. So if you get that in the back of the room, and that'll just kind of move the process along for us.
Thanks.
So this July 3 meeting is called to order. I'm going to call the roll and see who we've got here. Commissioner Shannon Cameron is not in attendance this evening. And as a way of introduction, just raise your hand so people know who you are. Commissioner Rob Francore, Commissioner Jack Hunter, Stan Siegel, Commissioner John Funny, Commissioner Adrian Schmidt, and Commissioner John Hess.
Present.
Alright, so let the record show that six of the members are present. And we have an inquiry, and we'll proceed. We'll proceed. This time, I'm going to ask everyone, including myself, turn off your cell phones or silence them. Okay? And let me recognize if anybody here will need to recognize elected officials, no? And let me introduce our Director of Community Development for the City of Brookhaven, Ms. Susan Cannon, and our City Planner for the City of Brookhaven, Mr. Howard Coons. He's there, busy taking notes. This planning commission has been established by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brookhaven. We conduct public hearings on land use, zoning changes, code text amendments, and other related matters. This commission does not rezone property, but rather, we're an advisory board which reports its findings and recommendations for consideration for action by the Mayor and the City Council of Brookhaven. So it's our job to listen and draw the best conclusion we can and make a recommendation based on what we're hearing and what the ordinances say and what we believe the future of the City of Brookhaven is being. So with that, I think I've got everything. So we've called to order. The first item of business will be approval of the minutes. Approval of the June 5 Planning Commission work session minutes that everybody had a copy of. Did everybody get a copy of that earlier? Do I have a motion to approve those June 5 Planning Commission work session?
Have a motion to approve the work session?
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, all in favor of approval of the June 5 2013 Planning Commission work session meeting notes?
Aye.
Okay. Second item is approval of the June regular meeting. The approval of June 5 Planning Commission regular meeting minutes?
I move that the June 5 Planning Commission meeting regular meeting minutes be approved.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a second.
I will second that motion.
I have a second. All in favor of approve the June 5 Planning Commission regular meeting minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're moving through this thing quickly. Do we have any organizational and procedural items, Ms. Cannon? Do we have?
No, sir.
No? So anybody? Do we have any unfinished business from our last, our June 5 meeting? No? Okay. So we'll go on to our, to the new business, the new business at hand. There'll be three items on the agenda this evening. There'll be a rezoning ordinance, ID number 1098, RZ 13-01. There'll be an ordinance text amendment, RZ 13-03, that's ID 1099. And another text amendment to the city signed ordinance will be ID 1100, that's RZ 13-04. So with that, Susan, would you want to read, or Howard?
I'll be happy to. Mr. Chairman, actually, that's not our exhibit on the screen, but we think we'll use that. This is case RZ 13-01. The property is located at 1475 North Druid Hills Road. The request is for rezoning from R 75 to R 88 on a 3.9 acre tract located, as previously stated, at 1475 North Druid Hills Road. The applicant is asking for a 31-unit townhome project. This application has been duly advertised, and the public hearing tonight will proceed. The staff stipulates to the staff report, which you do have in your package, we have recommended approval of this request for rezoning. The comprehensive plan, which we did adopt from DeKalb County, identifies the subject tract as suburban, which allows up to eight units per acre. This proposal is for eight units per acre. The surrounding property consists of R 75 and R 88, R 75 to the east, R 85 to the south, and R 88 to the west. And this particular R 88 proposal is in conformity with the land use plan. We have recommended approval with 15 conditions. It's our understanding that the applicant has agreed to those conditions. Late this afternoon, on the way out the door, I did receive a request for an addition of seven additional conditions, which Mr. Dillard will need to address on the podium, and we will need to react to those. But basically, this request for the 31-unit townhome project, staff has supported with 15 conditions. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to try to answer them.
Okay.
Just for clarification, you said there were seven additional conditions that was received by your office this late this afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what you said, Mr. Dillard. Alright, let me also say that I think you, we were told earlier that, and it's probably not in the packet, there were some residents who had submitted letters to us and emails, and there were two that were received this evening.
I did receive one.
Earlier, we did get a copy of them.
I did receive one en route on the way here, so I don't have any way to print it. But I do see that that particular party has submitted a statement card.
Okay. I want to make sure that we did get that electronically.
And I did email it to you, yes.
Right. We all had a chance to read that as well, so even though we did get it electronically, you know. So the process we'll follow tonight is part of the procedures that we had adopted in our first, in our first meeting. And that is, we'll have, the applicant will have 10 minutes to present their, the application. And they can use the whole 10 minutes or reserve a portion of that for a rebuttal if there are people, if there are anybody opposed to it. So the applicant will get 10 minutes, the applicant or their agent will get 10 minutes. We, as a commission, will have an opportunity to ask questions, and then we will, after that, open it up for anyone who is either, is opposed to, if there are, is anyone opposed to the application, and we'll have up to 10 minutes for that as well. And again, this commission will have an opportunity to address and ask any questions and clarification of those who have spoken, and ask any questions or clarification from the staff. What we're going to do, our intent is to have everyone be heard. We would ask that you be, when you're up, you be fairly succinct, try not to repeat what everybody else has said, give us new information. But we really want to hear what you all have to say. So with that, I guess we'll ask the applicant for the item RZ 13-01, 1475 North Druid Hills Road, to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Doug Dillard with Wyman, Noack, Curry, and Wilco. We represent the applicant. And I want to first state that we thank this board and the City Council for giving us an opportunity to meet with the neighbors and try to work something out. Unfortunately, we've not really been able to reach an agreement.
Yet.
The conditions which I sent Susan today was a result of our initial meeting with the neighborhood. I feel like we're making sufficient and good progress in trying to reach an accord. I think we can do that within the next 30 days. These conditions have been submitted to them for their response. We've had preliminary responses from some of the residents. We had a meeting last week where we had over 20 representatives or neighbors of the neighborhood in our offices. So we feel like we've made good, we've made good progress. We came here tonight not having an agreement worked out with the neighborhood and prepared. We have our architects and engineers here. We've had a traffic letter which I've yet to submit to Susan. We just got it today from Kimberly Horn, relative to perceived traffic improvements. As far as the applicant is concerned, we are agreeable to the conditions which have been suggested by staff. And with the neighborhood, we're suggesting an additional seven conditions, which we gave to Susan, and I know it was late, and I had them here tonight, prepared to give to you in case we did go forward with the hearing. Mr. Cowes and others of the neighborhood have asked that we continue this for one more 30-day period in order that we can see if we can reach an agreement. And we're agreeable to that, if it's agreeable to you. I know you're just dying to hear your first only case, but I think that...
On July 3? We were looking for fireworks, but that was outside. That was in Keswick.
Those are not the kind of fireworks you want, right?
We were thinking about Keswick Park.
Right. So I think that from, on behalf of the applicant, we certainly want to try to bring this to you with the support of the neighborhood and a series of conditions that we think we can meet. We were prepared, as you can see, with his team were here, ready to present, but we think it's a very good, well-thought-out plan that is consistent with what's already in the neighborhood. And will be a benefit for the neighborhood. We think the traffic issues can adequately be handled with the conditions that are recommended by staff and the other conditions which they have suggested. So we think we're making progress. We would ask that you hold it another 30 days. I think Mr. Cowes is here to also express those sentiments. If that is not the case, then we are prepared to make a presentation together this evening.
Okay. So if I understand, you were asking for us...
We're asking for a 30-day deferral, and it needs to be to a date certain. So your recommendation would need to be to your next scheduled in August. Likewise, unless we can get something worked out between now and City Council time, it would need to be then deferred by council to August as well.
Okay. And I assume you're holding the rest of your 10 minutes to see what happens.
For a vote.
I thought so.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I might add, due to some language items in our zoning ordinance, even with Mr. Dillard asking for deferral by the planning commission, and if you choose to either, you know, not recommend it or recommend it, to the date certain of 8/7, it still is required to go on the City Council agenda because of the way our ordinance is worded.
Now, Susan is correct on that.
Right. And what I read earlier that said, "We just recommend," right? So we might recommend...
Yours is just a recommendation. They still have to act.
We like to think it's an important recommendation.
But in the event that that were to happen, the date in August would be August 7. The date in September would be September 4.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So will, if they might have any questions for Mr. Dillard before we, and then ask the board. Let's hold that then, and just see if the public, let's open this up then to the...
Once you open the public hearing, you're opening the public hearing. So I think that the first response would be to Mr. Dillard's request.
Yeah, let me ask that the public hearing restricted to my request for a...
Okay. Alright, well then, do we have any questions for Mr. Dillard, or do we have a motion?
How about a request? Or a request? In the next 30-day period? If that were granted, the additional detail that we're going to be looking for, certainly I will be looking for, is just more detail about sanitation and landscaping buffer. According to the information we have in the packet here, that the landscape plan that was submitted is not a construction drawing, but has, you know, some reference to preservation of the lots' existing trees, with some plans to install some replacement trees to repopulate the landscape buffer yard. I'm presuming that that's going to be an issue that's going to be brought up by the public, so we want to be as well-prepared to speak to that. You may already have all that detail.
Let me just tell you, though, you know, we're not going to go do a grading plan or whatever. We can't, that's unrealistic until we know what our zoning is. And we can describe the buffer. We can describe the kind of material that's in the buffer. We can talk about height and on what centers it's planted and the type of material that's actually planted. But beyond that, you know, a landscape plan will still have to be done, but that's part of the land disturbance process.
Right, right, right.
The other thing that's been a real issue has been surface water runoff, okay? We've talked about the tension, we've talked about the way in which, and how and in what manner. Your ordinance requires that the runoff be reduced from what would be off-site, downstream runoff in an undeveloped state. Okay? So, and there's a percent above that, I can't remember exactly what it is. So we will actually improve the downstream issues, and we've got a couple of residences there on Matthews that we're concerned about. So we want to address, we want to address that, and we will be responsible for that. We're looking at underground detention, even though it's very expensive. We are going to consider that as an alternative. But that, the lightings, the line of sights from the adjacent property owners, garbage pickup and that kind of thing have all been discussed, and we have suggested in our conditions, if we can't get individual pickup, we're going to locate those compactors as far away from existing residences as possible. So I think we've got all the issues on the table, but as far as the actual plans that will come to you, the final engineering drawings will not be here. It'll be a conceptual plan with a site plan, square footage minimums and all that kind of stuff if necessary, locations of where these issues will be, where the detention facilities will be, what the depth of the buffer will be, what we'll plant in, what kind of height we require, and on what center.
Conceptual design detail is really...
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
Narrative along those lines as well.
Mr. Funny, have a question. Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Quick question as relates to the traffic study. You mentioned that you did receive something today from Kimberly Horn.
I will file that.
Okay. And they are providing a comprehensive traffic engineering study for that location?
They are, they are giving an opinion.
Okay.
Because this is such a small development. They're saying, and we're agreeing to the width that's suggested in the conditions with the right end and then a left turn lane end. What the Horn, the Kimberly Horn study says is that somewhere less than 100 trips per day are going to be generated in and out.
Okay.
And that it's not going to change the level of service on North Druid Hills Road. In their opinion, it's really not needed. The additional right-of-way is not needed, but we have agreed to provide that right-of-way.
What I would like to make certain that they are reviewing is, as you add a decel lane, you're actually moving away from the line of sight, which currently there is a line of sight issue there. So I would make certain that they address the safety issues.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. That's absolutely...
Okay. Also, the condition as it's listed, and I know we're not discussing because it's deferred, but it addresses potentially two needs, the left turn lane as well as the North Druid Hills Road right turn lane into the... I just want to make sure that the study doesn't only just address those, they need to look at the safety as it relates to crashes.
We're agreeing to the condition.
Okay. Alright, so staff...
The traffic report, let me just substantiate that the condition's going to be more than you need to make this a safe entrance, egress and egress.
Okay. So we may suggest some wording changes with regards to that condition, so that the traffic engineering study looks at it comprehensively, not limited to these two items.
That's right. This is just an opinion.
Okay.
This is what I would call a windshield deal, because it's kind of hard to spend the kind of money on a full traffic study when you don't know what your zoning's going to be.
I understand. I appreciate that.
Anybody else have anything? Commissioner Hunter?
What materially is going to change in 30 days? I mean, why, what do you expect to be different in 30 days from where you are now?
An agreement with the neighborhood.
Well, I'm not sure what that means exactly. I mean...
I'll tell you, I'll tell you exactly what it means. We've got, we've got adjacent property owners that we've met with, over 20 of them. We anticipate to have as many as three in agreement with the Vista. We've got two property owners on Matthews that are very much concerned. We'll have individual agreements with them and probably with their homeowners association. And there might be a third.
Okay. Who else? And then do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just before you make the motion, just for the record, I want to let you know that I do have comment cards, and I know we're not opening up the floor if you defer it. But I do have these, and they will go in the file if you defer it.
And we do have the, they'll all be filed, so that what we received in the emails...
Yes, yes.
Because they'll all be part of the file. All part of the file, so that every... Do we have a motion?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we defer the rezoning ordinance for the property at RZ 13-01, 1475 North Druid Hills Road until the next planning commission meeting.
August 7.
August 7th, at 7 o'clock. Do we have any discussion on this, on this motion?
Well, I would like to express, well, I'm not speaking for the board, but I would like to express the appreciation of Mr. Dillard working with the community, because what we're looking to do in Brookhaven is to make certain that the community is pleased with what's happening within our city. So I appreciate that, and realizing that everybody's not going to agree all the time, but I think your intention of looking to work with this neighborhood, we do appreciate that, because we're looking out for the best interests of our communities.
And I'd like to comment also, I am generally disinclined to approve or agree with deferrals because I think it's very difficult for the community to keep up the energy to move that. But I think in this case, I'm very happy to hear that there's progress is made, and I certainly would not want to stand in the way of, you know, for 30 days, an opportunity to get the community and this developer together. So I, you know, as I say, in general, I think deferrals work against the community. I think in this case, it sounds like really progress has been made, and I'm hoping that that's what, that we are reading that correctly. So I'm saying some head nodding back there, and I'm sure not all head nodding, but that's the, that's the way of it. So we have a...
Want to make a comment?
We have another, okay, wait, sure.
I'd like to segue on what Stan just said, and I appreciate you are all working together. I think that's very important. One of the great things we have going is part of our comprehensive plan recommendations, is part of, I think, the spirit of the City of Brookhaven, is to build a strong city. And to do that, we have to build strong communities, and we have to build strong neighborhoods. And the way we build strong neighborhoods is through connectivity. It's so that you have those incidental interactions with your neighbors, so you know your neighbors, and so that also we can get out of our cars and we have good places to walk, whether it's walking our dogs, strollers our kids, or just walking to the grocery store. And so I think something's very important. I hope that you build trust with each other through these conversations, and I hope that you also build strong connections, pedestrian connections at least, through the neighborhoods, so that you can all be connected. And I think that actually enhances everybody's safety. And I can go into a lot more detail about it on my personal experience, and my personal streets, and so on. But I hope that will continue to be part of the conversation, and I hope these discussions will build the confidence and the trust that everybody feels good about that approach.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add one quick comment. Along the lines of what Mr. Funny said, the, and what you said, I am also not generally for, you know, putting off business that needs to be decided, because we're going to have a pretty busy agenda for the rest of the year. But in this case, from what I've seen here, the staff had recommended 15 conditions that are, you know, substantial conditions, and the applicant's counsel proactively put on an additional half dozen or so. So I think that, from what I heard here today, the progress that was represented to us previously in session in June, I've seen evidence of progress. In fact, you know, continuing initiative to do that outreach to the community and to hear, not only to hear the concerns, but to actively, attempt to actively negotiate, you know, mutually agreeable resolutions and solutions. So that's the kind of initiative I like to see on the part of the applicant, and it's, I think, in my view, a model for, you know, the way these kinds of things ought to be done moving forward, so I don't want to comment.
Any other discussion? Alright, so we have a motion and a second to defer this to the, to recommend that the city, that recommended the City Council to defer until August the...
7.
7, at 7:00 p.m. All in favor of that, of recommending that deferral? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you so much, and thank you to the community. We appreciate, we appreciate your, and we appreciate you being here, and we want to give everybody a chance. Thank you. Alright. Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Aye. Give everybody just a minute to... Alright, next item on the, on the agenda. Oh, we've emptied a room.
Yes, you did.
Alright, next item on the agenda is...
I apologize.
We'll be patient.
Yes.
You want to do these in order? We should do these in...
We could ask.
Yeah, alright, we'll do, alright, we'll do mine. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is RZ, ID number 1099, RZ 13-03, text amendment to the city zoning ordinance related to building height, maximum height for single-family residences and threshold requirements for single-family detached structures. Do we need to read through the whole thing?
I do not. I spoke with legal today, and we stipulate to the text amendment on file, and I'll explain it.
Okay. Would you like to?
Having said that, the staff was directed by council to move forward with the text amendment, which you have before you, which is text, RZ 13-03. As you know, a text amendment goes through the same process that a zoning does, subject to zoning procedures. This is actually an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The text amendment has three components. The first is to create a definition of height. The second is to increase the maximum height limit of single-family from 35 feet to 40 feet. And the third aspect is to remove reference to threshold in the zoning ordinance. The existing definition of height in the zoning ordinance, there are actually two. One is for single-family, and one is for non-single-family. We have deleted both of those. We have created a single definition to apply to all structures. And that definition basically says that you measure height based on the average elevation around all sides of a structure, all sides of the building, to the mean height level between the eaves and ridge of a gable, hill, or garble roof, and into the coping of a flat roof. We do have one segment in that definition that excludes that measurement in the Brookhaven Peachtree overlay. If you recall, last month, we talked about how you measure from the finished grade of the sidewalk. So we did put that provision in here so that this amendment does not affect the Brookhaven Peachtree overlay. The height limit maximum has been moved from 35 to 40 feet at council's direction. The old way of measuring, and with existing code, is to go from the threshold to the peak of the roof, or the tip of the roof. The threshold allows you to lower the threshold, two feet below existing threshold, or two feet above existing threshold, to create the new threshold, and that becomes your baseline. Under that threshold measurement that's currently in the zoning ordinance, if your building height maximum is 35 feet, then that's, that's it. You can't go any higher than 35 feet from the threshold. There is currently no mechanism in the zoning ordinance to allow anyone to ask for a variance to that. The proposed definition to go from average grade around all sides of the building to the mean height level allows for that portion of a roof that exceeds above, extends beyond the mean height level, it basically becomes exempt from the height requirement, and it gives a little bit of flexibility and design for residential... from the height requirement, and it gives a little bit of flexibility and design for a residential structure. And again, in this particular text amendment, there is no provision for a variance. However, this proposal does allow some flexibility and design. So that is the text before you. We're here to present that to you and get your recommendation, your recommendation thoughts and comments, and pass it on to the council for them to make the final decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
All right.
What is unique about this roof height that we say that you cannot apply for a variance? I mean, you can apply for a variance for a variety of things, but what is it about this roof height limitation that you cannot apply?
Our ordinance, our Board of Zoning Appeals does not have the authority to grant a variance to height on anything.
So just height, you've said that height.
There are other things that they can't grant variances to, but they, but in regard to height, they specifically cannot grant variance to height.
Have you considered making that a part of these alterations, giving them the ability to make, give a variance on residential height?
No, we have not. I can elaborate on that if you would like for me to.
Please.
Number one, that was not the direction from the council. Number two, there are some jurisdictions that do allow that before the ZBA, and there are other jurisdictions that do not allow that before the ZBA. In my opinion, I think that when you establish districts and designs and elemental aspects for different zoning districts, that that's a policy decision that should be made by the council. I think that if you take something like height and allow a height variance across the board in the city citywide, you begin to chip away at considerations for variances in all districts when the zoning and the character of that district is, is what should prevail, and it should be the policy for that district. And I believe the council should set that policy.
Can I take my turn? I understand, we, we had, of course, in the work session, we had deeper, a little more discussion and understanding about the differences between thirty-five and forty feet. I am a little bit, you know, looking at, out at the vast crowd that's here tonight. Any change in our, in our, I'd like to, to ensure that any change we make to a, to an ordinance, which has serious and citywide effects, has been given a really fair public hearing. And this is July third, and I before, so I have some reservation, not reservation necessarily about the text of the amendment. I may or may not get that, but I have reservation of going at, going forward with this until, you know, the community has had a chance to, to, to digest it a little bit, so. I guess my question to you is, what's the implication of if we deferred this or recommended deferral for thirty days? I mean, what's the implication? Are people going to stop building? I mean, what do we, does the city still have, I mean, you're still going to get people walking in the door, aren't you?
We're still going to have people walking in the door that do not have any issues. We're still going to have people walking in the door that do have issues, and we do have people with issues. And they're sitting there. We can't, we can't do anything with them. But by the same token, if, if the ordinance is not passed, it's, there's still an issue, so. But this, this is a, a direction and request to move forward with it, to, to vet it through the hearing process and take it to the council for consideration.
Again, that's my reservation, that this was supposed to be a hearing process, and we don't have much of a figure. But, or anybody else have a, any other comment? And I'm sorry, I usually don't, I try to not do that to begin with.
Mr. Chairman, you, the, I don't think it's our, our intent to unreasonably withhold recommendation of changes to language dealing with this topic, although I think that, given the proximity of today's date to a federal holiday that a lot of people travel at, I mean, obviously, you could see that there aren't any real representatives of the public in attendance here to comment about it. It would be, I think, a good prudent idea to, to think carefully about the timing of it. But also, there are some language dimensions here that, personally speaking, I would feel more comfortable with having an opportunity to evaluate them further and perhaps discuss some direct, you know, have some direct question and answer sessions with staff so that I could better understand it.
What I'd recommend on, on that is as you, depending on what we, or what, what happens here this evening, if there is time, you can submit those questions after discussions that we can all maybe take and, you know, learn from the discussion, you know, that you're having with staff. So I'd certainly be interested, and depending on what happens here, I'm not going to predispose what we're going to do. Commissioner has, do you have anything on that?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I would just like to, for the record, bring up the, the issue of the threshold, removing the threshold as the basis, the starting point for measurement, and how that would affect, it affects particularly lots on uphill downhill slopes. When you have a street going down the middle of the slope and uphill lots on one side, downhill lots on the other side. I, I think that's a problem because under this current definition, then you're going to have an exaggerated height difference between the uphill houses and the downhill houses, and we have just such a situation on our street. It wasn't built under this condition, but if it had been, I think it really creates kind of an undesirable, unappealing architectural aspect. So as part of deferring it for thirty days, I'd also like to ask the planning department just to think about how that, how this change affects that, and if there's a way to mitigate that.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
And that is, this is a three-part change. The first thing.
I have no problem with the other parts.
Okay, the first with how you measure it. So my, my thought, yeah, my thought was going to, what I'm thinking is if you raise the limit to forty, but kept the threshold as the measurement. I think, I think, I was thinking that might be where your, your mind was going. I was trying to read your mind, but I was just offering that up as something to think about.
That's the direction that I'm looking towards. I think that aspect of using this mean dimension from the footprint is going to have unintended consequences. It's going to make lots that have an elevation rise in the back for a developer more desirable to builders because they're going to be able to go higher, and lots that, you know, what we in my neighborhood call the Billy Goat lots, less desirable because you're not going to be able to get the height you need off the threshold that using the threshold measurement, even if you want to increase it to forty feet, makes more sense.
I, I do want to add, though, that, and I appreciate what you're saying, I do want to add that in my thirty years, I have never used threshold. I have always used the average elevation, and the Georgia model code is based on average elevation, so I just want you to know that for discussion purposes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the director.
All right, please.
Where is the threshold of a home that has twenty-two steps going through the front door? If the front door of the house is really at the second level above grade, if you have a drive-under garage, for example, and you have a very large staircase, I'm referring to the house that I happen to live in.
One second.
Which is probably, I mean, that, the, the threshold of the front door to the residence is probably twelve feet above the driveway. So would it be forty feet above that?
Threshold, threshold means the top of the subfloor in the opening.
Of the main level of the residence?
That is designated as the front door of a dwelling.
So it would be forty feet above your twelve feet.
So fifty-two foot effectively above the driveway level.
Do I have a, I'm going to ask, do we have a motion then on this?
I would like to make a motion to defer the text amendment to the city of Brookhaven zoning ordinance relating to height and threshold for thirty days.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
And, and that is to August the seventh meeting, is that correct?
To the August seventh meeting, that's correct.
And again, this will go on the council agenda on the twenty-third until we can get the language in our ordinance fixed, which would be a text amendment.
I understand, I understand. I thought that's where, you know. So we have a motion to recommend deferral of this change to the, we have our August seventh hearing.
All right.
And we have a, a second. All in favor of that deferral?
Aye.
Aye. And all in the opposed? And I, and I thank you. I, I just, I look out there, and I think this is a public hearing, and there's not much public at the moment.
I just, it just occurred to me, and I'm sorry, it's because I'm new at motion business, should our motion say we recommend deferral to August seventh so that the planning department can't study the reason for the deferral? The issue of the threshold, and so that we can get more public input since we have a sparse turnout tonight? In other words, we want that to be conveyed, we want to make sure that the reasons for a recommended deferral are conveyed directly to the city council. I don't know.
So noted. I, I can, I can state that.
We certainly want to make sure it's in the minutes. I mean, and we can do that as well, but we certainly want to make sure that, and that's a good point, that the city council knows we're not just punting this down the road. We, we're doing this because we really want to have public, we have questions that we need to, to make sure that. I like to, I don't want to have my neighbor say, gee, I didn't know where that came from. All right, so next item, and thank you. I think that was a good discussion. I think that was a, I hope the city council will take our recommendation on that. The next item is ordinance, this is ID number ten ninety-nine, it's RD, RZ thirteen dash oh three, a text amendment to the city's zoning ordinance related to, I'm sorry. I did that out of order, didn't I? How did that happen? RZ ten ninety-eight, RZ thirteen dash.
Let's start over, let's start over.
Can we start again? I know, all right. This is item number three, the ordinance, ID number one eleven hundred, RZ thirteen dash oh four, the text amendment to the city's sign ordinance. Did I get that right?
Yes, you did. RZ thirteen dash oh four is a text amendment to the city's sign ordinance. We stipulate to the text as written, which you have in your package. The purpose of the text amendment is to allow for lawful businesses to erect signage. The text as written allows for the staff to deny or revoke signage that has either been proposed or permitted for unlawful, businesses that become unlawful or that are unlawful. And we would recommend that you recommend approval of this text amendment.
Any questions for the staff? Any questions? Do we have a motion then?
I, I do have a question, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. And by sign, we're defining sign as, or we're not defining sign, we're, sign is.
Sign's already defined.
Of whatever material it happens to be.
Right. Whether it's a pole sign, ground sign, wall sign, whatever type of sign.
What if it's an electric sign?
I'm sorry.
What if it's an electric sign, and the content of the electric sign changes?
The point is, so to make sure that I'm getting the point across, is that, for example, if someone filed an application and the application met all of the dimensional requirements, the type of sign requirements, this height, the size, the placement, but their business was not lawful, there's currently not a mechanism for us not to allow for that to be.
So irrespective of the sign, substrate, material, message, content, regardless, it's that issue?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other questions?
Continuing along with your example, is there a circumstance where a particular business that we would not, the city would not issue a license to operate? It's the one that put up a sign? I mean, what, I guess I'm trying to figure out, what's the problem we're trying to solve here?
Could you repeat your question?
I'm trying to imagine a circumstance where you would have a business that is unlawful, which would imply that the city wouldn't grant a permit to operate or issue a business license, yet they, they submit for a sign.
Well, let's say that someone submitted an application for a vet clinic or a, let's say they submitted an application for a sign for, to, to advertise their vet clinic or their medical office, but they're in a residential zoning district. There's not a mechanism for us to deny that sign because the sign ordinance goes to height, size, placement. It doesn't go to whether the business is lawful or not. So this language is being put in there to give us the opportunity to make sure that signs that are operating or erected are therefore lawful businesses.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, continue with an example.
Sure.
For Mr. Franker. So by way of example, if I were a acupuncturist.
Yes.
And I opened up an acupuncture store or, or practice in town Brookhaven, and I live in Pine Hills, and I stuck a sign in my front yard that says acupuncture business, that would be an example?
That would be an example.
Okay, so this would allow you to have that sign legally removed?
Right.
Thank you.
That's good.
To follow up, I don't have the right to erect a sign in my yard anyway.
He, right, but he was just using that as an example. Maybe we should think of another, let's think of another example.
Well, I guess that's my question. Do, is that a, would that example be permitted under the ordinance today? Could you do that? Could, could any individual who runs a business put a sign to promote their business in the, in the front yard of their house?
Well, okay, I, I have an example that, I have an example that occurred.
Yes.
I have an example that occurred, right?
Yes, you could, because it would be a standard informational sign. I mean, there's, there would be restrictions on it. But you need to have a lawful business, because we can't get into speech, free speech, but we can get into lawful business.
Yeah, if they're not operating the business at that residence, it would be, this would give you the power to remove that sign.
Right.
There was actually an example, and, and, you know, that where a sign was put up on a piece of property. It was a zone commercial, a sign was put up, and the business, when they, they went to get a business license, it was denied. The sign stayed up.
That.
And it was, and the sign, and there was no opportunity, there was no way for, there'd be no way without an ordinance to take that sign down. And as it turned out, the sign was a national franchise sign, but that business wasn't able to operate because of proximity to residential neighborhoods. So having an ordinance, if I understand it correctly.
You do understand it correctly.
This would give you the opportunity to say, that sign's got to come down because you're, you're an unlawful business.
Correct.
You don't have a, a, and that actually occurred, and I won't say where. All right, do we have a motion? Do we have any more discussion? And do we have a motion on this?
I have a motion to adopt the text amendment to subsection twenty-one six A as provided here by the planning department.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have a second, as that is?
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion on this, any more discussion or any discussion on the motion itself? All right, well, then we'll call the vote. All in favor of recommending, recommending to the city council to move forward with the text amendment, RZ thirteen dash oh four, as specified, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have a recommendation on that. Well, it was, our new business, so under F is ordinances, but that was, do we have any other discussion of ordinances on the agenda? I don't think so. So we are at a place where I will entertain a motion for, and I'll get this one straight, I didn't need to adjourn, but do I have a, do I have a motion?
A move that we adjourn?
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion of that? Do we have any discussion of that?
It's late, we're out of water and the pizza's getting cold.
We adjourn with, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a lot of material.
I guess I shouldn't ask if you, you didn't want to testify.
No.